Good afternoon and welcome to the September meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Brenda, if you please call the roll.
Yes. Linda Anderson here. Gibb Backland.
Here.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher.
Here.
Rick Cantrell.
Here.
Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mary Mae White.
Here.
Howard Wilson.
We have confirmed that we have a call. We have everyone present today. Thank you. I'd like to first introduce Paul Cross as our new commission member. He is present today. And I'd love for you, Paul, welcome first to you. And I would love for you to introduce yourself and give us some of your history of your involvement in preservation so the community at large knows your abilities.
I'm happy to do that. It's a pleasure for me to be here and have the opportunity to serve with the Historic Zoning Commission. I was a graduate of MTSU with a master's in history and went directly from there to the Tennessee Historical Commission where I worked for nine years, serving as the deputy state historic preservation officer for Tennessee. I worked with the Tennessee Planning Office at that time and participated in the drafting of the Enabling Authority for Historic Zoning in Tennessee, which was passed by the legislature in 1982. Worked on the restoration of a number of historic sites, including initial studies on the Rutherford County Courthouse and some initial studies on Oakland's Mansion and was involved with the Sam Davis Home. So I have quite a history in Rutherford County. I left the Historical Commission and went out as a private consultant in 1982, lived in Murray County, worked on the historic plantation complex there with a number of historic buildings for about 15 years. And there served at the city's request as the first chairman of Historic Zoning Commission for the City of Columbia, helped get the first historic zone enacted there, continued to be involved as a consultant in historic preservation. And I'm glad to have the opportunity to work here in Murfreesboro. I believe that Murfreesboro is certainly one of the most historic cities in the state of Tennessee, has a lot of historic resources, and I'm hopeful to have the opportunity to protect and preserve those through working with this commission. I also am acquainted with a number of the people, having worked with Jim Thompson through the years when I worked for the Tennessee Historical Commission and Dave Becker. I'm honored to be up here with those folks.
Thank you, Paul. Everyone should have received minutes of our last meeting held on August the 18th in your packet. Are there any corrections or additions that are necessary? If no corrections, the chair would welcome a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll make the motion to submit the, accept the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Then if you're ready for the question, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Please note at the end that they were accepted. Robert, what is our first order of business today?
Chairman Thompson, what we have is staff reports and other business. At the last meeting in August, excuse me, there was a lot of discussions centered around whether the Historic Commission had the authority to review removing of bricks that had been taken up along East Main Street. After some discussion, there was really no general consensus with that determination. We tried to set up a meeting with the city manager and the commission, just couldn't do that. But we did get a meeting with the chairman and the city attorney and the city manager myself to discuss this. Included in your minutes, or included in your agenda package is some comments from the city attorney regarding her thoughts on the commission's authority to review this After looking through this, and I'm assuming you got it all in your package, she concluded that the state law, then the city codes, and the city zoning ordinance, the rules of procedure, and the design guidelines, there actually was no overwhelming or no statutes that required the city's plans to be submitted to the commission. But it did authorize the city to make a decision to pull up the concrete, or pull up the brick sidewalks and replace them with concrete. She also, however, did say that it was, to be consistent with the goals that the city had when the city created the commission, it would probably be a good idea to have better lines of communication with the commission when attempting projects inside the city's historic zone. And also at that meeting, Mr. Lyons also added his letter into the, to this staff comments. And he says that the city has a capital improvements plan that's going to begin in 2010 and which where there will be funding for additional downtown street improvements. Some of those, the timeframe and the exact place and location of all those is not really to be determined yet. But he wants to include the city's historic commission when these projects do come within the jurisdiction of the East Main Historic Zone. And gist of the meeting, I think, was, I think I'm looking forward to some future work down in the downtown area where there's going to be a little bit more cooperation with the commission and the city administration in utilizing what we have, like Mr. Cross says, and we all know that Murfreesboro is a real historic town and it's got a lot of beauty to it. And if we can work together, we can do some good things to it.
Thank you.
The city manager and the city attorney here also to answer any questions you might have regarding this.
Ms. McGannon, would you like the opportunity to come to the podium and speak regarding your research so that those in the audience could also hear what you found?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. The members of the Historic Zoning Commission, and it is nice to be back with you, it's been a while, should have the different documents that are germane to my analysis, those being the state statutes that Mr. Cross mentioned, the city zoning ordinance, and sections of the city code that, Mr. Lewis, I believe you were going to make sure that they had in addition to the zoning ordinance, together with the documents that deal specifically with the Historic Zoning Commission, those being the rules of procedure and the guidelines that have been adopted. As my opinion letter states, the state statutes require, if you create a Historic Zoning Commission, as Murfreesboro did in 1986, that things requiring permits have to go to the Historic Zoning Commission that are in the historic district. And state law also allows the local governments that create a Historic Zoning Commission to give it some authority over building, structure, or other improvement on real property, whether privately or publicly owned, for which a permit is not required. So in terms of, is the state law broad enough to allow there to be authority in the Historic Zoning Commission over public sidewalks? It's certainly a possibility if one were to classify a sidewalk as being an improvement on real property. So then you need to look at what the city zoning ordinance says. And in addition to the textual analysis, which I quoted, subsequent to sending that letter, I had the opportunity to review the minutes at the time that the creation of the commission and the zone was considered, to see whether or not there was anything in the legislative history that would add to the interpretation of the plain words that are quoted there. And there is nothing in those minutes which suggests that the city council at that time intended to mean improvements such as public infrastructure in terms of the sidewalks would be subjected to the mandatory authority of the Historic Zoning Commission. And certainly, the plain language of the zoning ordinance does not. It seems to be very clear that buildings and structures are within the authority of the commission. There isn't a specific definition of improvement that, or description of public sidewalks in the right-of-way as being something as to which mandatory authority is given. When you look at the sections of the zoning ordinance that deal with historic zoning, one of the rules of construction, when you're looking at a variety of documents, trying to understand what the law is, is that you try to interpret them to be compatible with one another if they came from the same authority, in this instance, the city council. So the city council adopted the city code sections dealing with the authority of the city manager over sidewalks. The city council also adopted the historic zoning sections of the zoning ordinance. And you try to see, can they be construed to be compatible? Or do you deal with most recent in time or other rules of statutory construction? And the reference in the zoning ordinance is, as I note on the top of the second page of my opinion, that even though a permit is not required, the Historic Zoning Commission was given the duty to input on sidewalks along the public right-of-way, which might affect the character of any building or structure within the historic district. There are sections in the zoning ordinance which also talk about remedying of dangerous conditions, and that's also quoted on the second page of my opinion. As I note, the first sentence deals with the fact that someone who receives an order from, a citizen who receives an order from a city enforcement agency, will not be violating the zoning ordinance if they comply with that order from the enforcement agency, even though this commission has not ruled on that. But it attempts to prevent putting a citizen in that kind of conflict because the second part of the section deals with the fact that this commission is supposed to get an opportunity, adequate opportunity, to review and provide written comments before a city enforcement agency gives such an order or direction to a citizen. I therefore noted at the bottom of the second and the top of the third page, that had such an order been given to a citizen by a city enforcement agency, it is clear that this commission should have been given adequate opportunity to review that enforcement action and provide written comments. If one says that a sidewalk is to be covered by that, I note that the definition of structure in the zoning ordinance clearly does not cover something that involves resurfacing of the ground. So I believe that would suggest, interpreting the zoning ordinance consistently, that sidewalks would not be a structure. And I do not believe that they would also be a site. But again, if an order to a citizen had gone out, there would certainly be ambiguity as to whether or not the zoning commission, Historic Zoning Commission, had to have adequate opportunity to review. And I would think, from a prudent point of view, rather, when there is ambiguity, that that would have been solicited. Then you look at the commission's rules of procedure. Those rules of procedure, and I reference a couple of those sections, obviously you have the entire document, but when they are talking about approval of removal or demolition, specifically are talking about application for permits, and are specifically talking about buildings or structures. When in Section 9, again, it's talking about permits, building relocation, or demolition. And it's in that context, in Section 9, that a reference is made to sidewalks that are visible from a public right-of-way, not sidewalks in a public right-of-way. Subsection K specifically talks about the ability of city staff, at this time that would be Mr. Lewis, as he is the person who would have administrative approval on behalf of the commission to do certain certificates of appropriateness. And you look at the guidelines for the commission, for the East Main Historic Zone. They too are specific. When you look at the initial statement, "These guidelines shall apply only to the exteriors of buildings and to areas of lots visible from public rights-of-way." That's the overarching rule of interpretation. What are these guidelines supposed to apply to? They're supposed to apply to exteriors of buildings and areas of lots. There is also, as I point out, a general statement, which doesn't go to what it applies to, but what the purpose of the guidelines is. And that is that distinguishing original qualities or characters of a building's environment shall not be destroyed, which would suggest that brick sidewalks could be construed as being something contributing to a building environment, and that those should not be destroyed. But again, it's not the subject of the guideline. I also quote back to you Section 6, which talks about alterations and accessory structures. And in a list of items relating to a building, it mentions sidewalks. But again, the context, as you go through the different sections that I've mentioned, is relative to buildings or structures. There is nothing in the history of, or the plain language of these documents, which suggest that the city council intended to change the standard that had previously set relative to sidewalks, as to those being, in terms of materials being used, or the responsibility for them from the city manager. Now, there is, as I think that members of the commission are aware, other sections, including a section in the city charter that deals with the ability of the city to require property owners who abut public right-of-way to take financial responsibility for the condition of sidewalks, and to require them to pay for their maintenance or upkeep if they fail to do so. There is nothing which suggests that that power of the city to require property owners to maintain sidewalks removes that authority from the city and from the city manager, in the way that it is assigned in the city code sections, which are referenced. It's therefore, my conclusion, when you see the absence of any explicit statement that public sidewalks in the right-of-way are to be deemed an improvement for which mandatory approval of change is to be sought from this Historic Zoning Commission, that such approval is not required, since the language is very explicit about when approvals are mandatory. These guidelines and rules of procedure have been focused on buildings and structures privately owned, rather than the public right-of-way and resurfacing of surfaces, whether that be a sidewalk or a road surface. It is not clear anyplace that that was given to the Historic Zoning Commission. It is also, as I indicated in my conclusion, certainly within the realm of what is possible for the Historic Zoning Commission to give valuable input to the city administration, to include streetscape improvements because of the purpose of the historic zone, to preserve all of the items that create the appearance and ambiance of a historic zone. And I think, as the city manager's letter indicated to you, it is his intent to do that. I will let his letter, and he speak for himself, but I think it is certainly permissible for that consultative role, which he has outlined, to be held by this commission. But I do not believe that the city charter code or your own guidelines or procedures require such approval. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Anyone from the commission, if you would like to ask specific questions of Ms. McGannon, please?
Ms. McGannon, does the term improvement, if we just assume that it is an improvement, does that change your opinion, if we could all agree that it was an improvement, a sidewalk is an improvement?
No, because the state statute is the one that says authority over improvements can be given. When you look at the guidelines and rules of procedure, there are no specific sections saying improvements. You know, there's no definition there. So in the absence of a specific definition of an improvement and outlining what the commission's role is with regard to those improvements, it wouldn't. You know, I certainly agree that it doesn't answer every question. One of the things, anytime a situation comes up, you look at things and see them in a different light. Mr. Lewis and I were both chagrined to discover that since 1986, you've had a document that goes from Section 8 to Section 14. And my question to him was, are there missing sections I don't have in my copy? Well, no, it was just misnumbered and has been there all that time. Similarly, in the section on remedying of historic, remedying of dangerous conditions, there's phrasing with such order of direction. Well, I never heard of an order of direction. I'm fairly certain what was intended was order or direction. In the same light, I think when a situation like this comes up, you look closely and you may find things, or find that things are missing. And I think one of the things that is not here is a definition of improvement. But there is a definition, as I mentioned, of structure. And I know of nothing that would suggest that the city council intended to give control over the public right-of-way to the Historic Zoning Commission. So even if there had been a definition of improvement, I think there would have to be more than that to indicate a clear intent to change that authority from where it is otherwise placed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. McGannon?
Yes, sir.
If a private individual were to begin work on a sidewalk...
A sidewalk in the right-of-way, or the private person's sidewalk?
...in a similar situation, would they be subject to that permit you have to get for working in the right-of-way that's issued by Mr. Low down at the street department?
We haven't been faced with that situation. I hate dealing with hypotheticals, but the intent of the right-of-way permit is to make sure the city knows everybody is working in its right-of-way because of all of the possible damage that could be done to infrastructure, some of which may be visible and some of which is a subsurface.
So that would be that hypothetical, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
But that assumes that there would be a grant of such a permit, and I don't know that there would in the scenario you're describing.
Okay, okay.
Ms. McGannon, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. First of all, I want to thank you for coming by.
Certainly.
Not being a lawyer, it's really difficult to follow everything that you've gone through. But one of the things that has struck me, how one word can change the interpretation of what one visualizes. In our laws, it says sidewalks along the public right-of-way that might affect the character of any building, et cetera, et cetera. What you're saying is, is that the sidewalks in the public right-of-way are not under our authority, but sidewalks, or any walks, sidewalks along the public right-of-way are. So one word changes everything, and I think that the average person reading our laws and rules were taken back by that interpretation. In my opinion, whether it's a sidewalk in the right-of-way or one that's teeing off the right-of-way up to the front door of any property, I think both of those sidewalks affect the character of the building that's facing. So that's part of the problem that we have, and why all the interest has come onto the subject.
I think the impact on character is certainly why it would make it appropriate for the city to engage in consultation. The, I'm not, the along word, I think, is significant, but one word in and of itself isn't the basis for my opinion. When you look at the other things that are listed there, you know, you look at what's put in the same category, those things are things that would relate to a specific private property owner's site or building. And so it is, it is trying to look at the context. And the context overall, as with the guidelines, is that it's buildings and lots, it's specifically directed towards those situations. There is mention of sidewalks, but the overarching emphasis is on the private property owner.
Ms. McGannon, I had brought up last meeting, a sentence in the State Zone website that said, "The certificate of appropriateness requirement applies not only to homeowners but to businesses and government entities in the H1 zone as well." So would it be your interpretation that where it mentions the government entities, that would be if the city-owned property, like a private residence would own a house there, and they're not in the right-of-way, that that's what it's speaking to? It's not the streets and the sidewalks? That's not what it's talking about?
I think it's very clear that if the city owned a building lot, that it would be subject to the certificate of appropriateness requirement. Now, as members of the commission may recall, we've had, with Central Middle School, for example, disputes over sovereign immunity, as we had when we were dealing with the postal service, over the postal mailboxes. So even that reference in the state website has to deal with the sovereign immunity questions. But clearly, if the city owned a building, it would be subject to the certificate of appropriateness requirement.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. McGannon, I want to thank you and your staff for what I know was a tremendous amount of work to render this opinion as factually and to document it the way that you did. I appreciate the effort that went into that.
Thank you.
I know that when the city, under current development standards, when a developer, or in the case of a situation where an area is developed by one developer and then he sells those lots off, that individual home builder or the developer one is responsible for having a sidewalk put in to specified standards. I note that in this Article 2, Construction and Repair of Sidewalks, Section 2845, states that the city has the right to require a homeowner who has a sidewalk which has become dangerous or in disrepair, to require that individual to repair that sidewalk at their expense.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And if they don't do that, then the city has the right to go in and repair it and then bill that property owner for the replacement of that sidewalk. I'm curious, I'm assuming that in the case of these sidewalks that have become the point of our discussion, that the city did not ask these people to repair their sidewalks. Is that?
That's correct. There had been, on other brick sidewalks in this general area of the city, rebuilding efforts in the past, and the city had not sought to get repaid by the property owners on those occasions, and it did not on this one either.
So no effort was made to ask the property owners who had the brick sidewalks to bring them up to a state of satisfactory repair at their own expense in this case?
No, the city did not call upon the property owners to individually make these changes.
Had they done that, and I don't know why they didn't do that, but had they done that, would those property owners had to come before the Historic Zoning Commission to get approval? Let's say that they had brick and they wanted to replace it with concrete because it was less expensive, would they have been required to come before this commission?
As I said to Mr. Cantrell, hypothetical questions are speculative and difficult. We haven't been faced with that situation. I think that's something that now that the city manager has indicated his intent to try and come for consultation on the sidewalks, I don't imagine that we would follow a different process if the city should choose to ask a private property owner to make the sidewalks safe at their expense, that seeking the commission's input would be the process that would be called for then. If the city should choose to exercise its rights under Section 2841 through 46, I think the section of the zoning ordinance that I mentioned to you about remedying dangerous conditions would apply, totally apart from whether it was a sidewalks or not. Then it would be a city enforcing agent saying, you must fix this because it's dangerous. And the zoning ordinance says, in that situation, the city is not to send such a directive without coming back to the commission and giving the commission opportunity for input. So should the city choose to make the owners do it or pay for it by the terms of the zoning ordinance, it would be back here.
Okay. I'm going to ask this question for the benefit of people who own homes that have brick sidewalks in front of their houses. Understanding that they, under the code, have a responsibility to maintain those sidewalks, would the city allow them, at their own expense, to renovate the sidewalks to a safety standard that would be acceptable to the city at their own expense as an alternative to having them taken up and replaced with concrete at the city's expense? And you may not be the person that can answer that question, but I know there are a lot of other people out there who have these sidewalks. I've talked to a few of them, and I'm curious to know if that's, is that an option?
Mr. Cross, that is a policy and engineering question, which I will decline to answer because I think the city manager would probably wish to consult with the city engineer as to whether or not he thought that was the best way to exercise his responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. McGannon. Mr. Lyon, would you like to speak today?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you. In my prior position in Virginia, I staffed a commission very similar to this, so I'm familiar with the issues that you deal with. I know the decisions you make are often difficult ones, but do want to, you know, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Really, my focus in my comments and in my letter is really how we move forward. I can't unring any bells. I'm really more focused on, you know, where do we go from here? And as Ms. McGannon had indicated, although it does not appear that you must be consulted, I do plan on taking any future brick replacements to you from a consulting point of view. As you know, the replacement of sidewalks has a number of different facets: aesthetics, safety, liability, historic value, cost. Certainly, you're going to look at this from the perspective first of historic preservation, and I certainly honor and respect that. But as you all, I think, well understand, the decision to replace sidewalks has many other factors that need to be considered. But I do, in the sense of wanting to have good communications with you, and I do value your input, that future brick sidewalk replacements in the historic district are something that I will bring back to you before we make those changes. Additionally, as I had indicated in my letter, the city has a five-year capital improvement plan. That plan is updated regularly. We expect to bring that document to the mayor and council in the next 30 to 60 days. As part of that next version of our capital improvement plan, we're looking to implement improvements in the downtown. Now, at this point in time, we don't have specific blocks identified, but what we have done is, through the help of SEC Engineering a few years ago, is develop a template for improvements in the downtown. That's another document that, as we look at sidewalks in the downtown, that we'll bring back to you to let you take a look at it before we would actually implement any construction projects. But the thought with the CIP is that we're not going to be able to undergo, you know, massive renovations in any one, at one point in time. But it is something on a regular basis that we, you know, see the opportunity in the parts of our downtown that have older water lines, older sewer lines, perhaps some drainage issues, that as we, you know, deal and address those concerns, that when we get up to the surface, what is it that we can do to extend the template that we've started in our downtown? I think we're all very proud of the downtown. We've certainly seen a lot of use of brick by the city in the downtown in our crosswalks and the pavers. We certainly see it in the gateway area on projects like the avenue. So we certainly put a lot of value on brick and the aesthetic appeal to it. But as I mentioned, we want to make sure that we're also addressing, you know, the safety and liability concerns, the handicap access and so forth. All those can be done. It's a matter of cost and having a plan. So I did want to let you know that we will bring those back to you in the future and be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Lyon, you were, you know, part of all the meetings where this decision that Mr. Haley went forth to remove the brick sidewalks and replace that with cement because it was less cost and more timely, less labor. But what I'm very puzzled by is the interest that went into the avenue and then the downtown squares, you mentioned in your letter, and Middle Tennessee Boulevard with the brick crosswalks. If that's interest and concern was placed in those areas, why was it not considered in the downtown historic area, which in more than any of those other locations, the brick pavers and sidewalks are even more important?
Well, Mr. Becker, as I mentioned, I'm focused on where we go from here forward. You know, the decision on the 600 block of Main Street, that was not something I was in the front seat on. You know, that decision had been made here by the prior city manager. He was trying to address the safety concerns, and I can't unring that bell. But I can tell you, though, Mr. Becker, is where we move forward from here, I think the city has shown that brick is certainly a valuable material, certainly adds to the historic charm and character of our community, and that's something I think we're going to try to incorporate as we do these downtown improvements.
No one would argue the fact that the 600 block needed to be repaired. Possibly not replaced, but it needed to be repaired. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Lyon? Thank you, Mr. Lyon.
Okay, thank you.
I see we have some people in the audience today. Is there anyone who would like to come before the podium here and speak? If you would, state your name and your address.
I'm Dr. King Jameson. I live at 520 East Main Street in the historic zone. My time before you is winding down, but it seems, because of comments, that though that is the end of a story, a new story is beginning, and I'd like to tell you a story. Because it speaks to activities that I've been involved in the last few weeks. Years ago, a situation arose at MTSU that was intolerable and was making the teaching profession there difficult because of the lack of funding. So we formed an organization and got together and lobbied the legislature and went before the Speaker of the House and had meetings with our legislator, some with the organization and some I made privately with the legislator. That legislator taught me a lesson that I've always remembered, and I think it's a valuable one, for situations like this and situations that we've been in for the last two months. And he said he got the lesson from an elder gentleman himself, Mr. Jim Cummings in Woodbury. And it's from Corinthians. If the trumpet makes an uncertain sound, who will gird himself for battle? And you could say it this way: If no one sounds the trumpet, no one will go to bat. No one sounds the bugle, no one will come to assembly. The man that Jim Cummings taught that lesson to, and the man who taught that lesson to me, was none other than John Bragg, father of the mayor. I suppose that in the last few weeks, I've tried to say in no uncertain terms what the ordinance said, and I've said that to my fellow citizens, and I've read it to you and I've read it to other people. I'm so glad that Mrs. Gammann has read the ordinance. We know that the reading level of our country's been going down, and I'm not sure that some of our folks locally have ever read the ordinance. But it occurs to me, speaking of the contents of the ordinance, who removed improvement from the dictionary? For crying out loud, everybody knows what an improvement is, and that's why the definition's not in the ordinance, because everybody knows what an improvement is. And that brings us to a dilemma. You see, if the, if person A says, I'm in charge of this improvement and I'm going to see that it's done, and does it, then that person is in charge of that improvement. And if that improvement is a protected site, that person is liable to jail term, according to the ordinance. Now, so that's the dilemma for the city. The city has said, I'm in charge of this improvement, and they removed a sidewalk. But it was in a protected site because this is listed, that area is listed in the Historic Register, National Historic Register of Historic Places. It's also listed in the APTA registry. So it's a protected site. But that's not really our dilemma. Our dilemma is this: If person A says, I'm in charge, and I don't care who, I believe I'm in charge of the improvements and so I'm going to make them, and I'm not going to assault anybody. Now, person B comes along and says, well, I think I want to be involved with this and I want to talk to the commission. If we're going to extricate ourselves from this situation in the future, we have to do better than that. We can't operate on opinion. Opinion of who has the authority to do this, who has the authority to do that, and who has the want-to to do this. We have to know. So I've given you a memorandum that shows what I have done to try to lay the groundwork for getting to this point. I won't go into that at all in terms of the minor details, but there is one detail I thought you should be aware of definitely, and that is the detail about the petitions. The petitions are being circulated probably as I speak, and they are being circulated to show that the property owners in the historic zone have been aggrieved, that is, their rights have been violated. And those will be on file at my house in case there ever is a necessity for defining a class in a class action suit. Their names and telephone numbers will be on those lists. And there's another item you should be aware of, and that is I consulted with several members of the legal profession in my activities as a citizen in trying to blow the bugle, so to speak. One of those members of the legal profession, whose credentials are impeccable, it doesn't make any difference what light you look at those credentials in, they are unquestionably That person said, I'm sorry that I can't hear this case because I'm already prejudiced. The foundation of the sidewalk should have been laid and bricks should have been put on top of it. So the case would be prejudiced and I couldn't hear it. But those individuals along that sidewalk that were removed might be able to file in federal court under the Fifth Amendment and possibly the Fourteenth Amendment for damages and the diminution of their property values. That should be on the record and should be in the minds of the property owners in the Now, there's another piece of information I've left with you there, and it's the recommendations. There's nothing new in this. It merely cites the sections of the charter, the code, and the ordinance, and it is suggested that certain language be inserted in all three of those. My motivations have been no more than to inform you of the duties as a citizen of the Main Street Historic Zone to the end that ruined sidewalks as a result of illegal action by the city of Murfreesboro be restored, that the integrity of the Historic Zone Ordinance be established, that the integrity of the Historic Zone Commission's authority to act on behalf of Historic Zone homeowners who have been deprived of certain property rights as stated in the Historic Zone Ordinance be hence forced established. And finally, that the general public be alerted to the city's disregard for its ordinances and its willingness to act with impunity and disregard of them. So the recommendations that I leave with you are cross-references. It's not new language. Nothing new is there. It merely puts language in the charter that refers to the historic ordinance. And the sections that are quoted from the code or cited in the code are asked for cross-references, which give the language of the code so that Mr. B comes to the code, or Mr. A, or Mr. C, or Mr. D, that later junctures, comes to the code and reads the code and says, oh, I see here there is a reference to the Historic Zone Ordinance, and I think perhaps I should go see those people. And I've given you those recommendations because I didn't think it was proper. And I've given you those recommendations because I didn't think it was proper to complain without giving some constructive criticism. And I didn't think it was right to come before you without telling you of my activities and a decent respect for the opinions of the fellow citizens in Historic Zone requires that I should do so. I hope that you will take to heart the suggestions that I've given you and the recommendations. And whatever steps need to be done, I have to confess that I'm ignorant of that. To get this language inserted would be of benefit to everyone. It would help you, it would help the citizens, it would help the planning commission, and perhaps the trauma that we've experienced in the last two months. In closing, I'd like to read something, share something. Oh, it's a favorite of mine, and I hope you'll indulge me for just 15 seconds. Every now and then, a movie comes along that moralizes. And one of my favorites gives this quote. "For over a thousand years, Roman conquerors returning from the wars enjoyed the honor of triumph in a tumultuous parade. In the procession came trumpeteers, musicians, and strange animals from conquered territories, together with carts laden with treasure and captured armaments. The conquerors rode in a triumphal chariot and days prisoners walking in chains before him. Sometimes his children, robed in white, stood with him in the chariot or rode the tracehorses. A slave stood behind the conqueror, holding a golden crown and whispering in his ear a warning that all glory is fleeting."
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Is there anyone else who'd like to come before the board and say something? Yes, please. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Carol Lynn Low. I own the property on the corner of Main and Hancock. I didn't plan on saying anything today because I think the damage has been done, and it can't be repaired. I mean, the city struck at the very heart of the historic district. And whatever the lawyers say, you can interpret those laws any way you want, but it was not in the spirit of the Historic Zoning Law to rip out that I just think the people that can't tell the difference between stamped asphalt, as in the MTSU brick crossways, and 150-year-old brick just don't get it. They will never get it. But I'm still upset that they ripped up my sidewalk. And it shouldn't have been done. They knew they should have asked you all about it, and they knew they would get in opposition, so they just went ahead and did it anyway. And that was arrogant and insensitive, to say the least.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak today? Ms. Miller?
My name is Marie Miller, and I live at 610 East Main, and I hadn't planned to speak. But I just want to say, I am just sick about losing my brick sidewalk. And when I told my daughter about it, who had lived, she lives in New Orleans, she said, "Oh, Mama, how horrible." I told her I'd written a letter to the paper, and she said, "Your letter isn't very good." She said, "You didn't use words like brutish or crude." I said, "No, I didn't." I am sick about it, but I would like to commend the workers. Mr. Chris Griffiths, Mr. Mike Stacy, Mr. Raymond Hillis, they have all been so generous and kind to me as a raving old lady who was just sick about what they were doing. They couldn't have been kinder and sweeter to me. I also want to thank Raoul, who was in charge of the workers. He translated for me into Spanish and back and forth, and I appreciate him. And as always, I appreciate Mr. Benny Davenport. He has been wonderful to me through the years, but I just wanted to commend the workers, even though they were doing horrible things. They were just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak today? Well, thank you. Is the commission, is there any further discussion or questions you may have that you would like to address? Anyone here?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Jamison for his recommendations, and I think it's not something we can certainly act on today because these need to be studied. But I think that it is something that we certainly want to look into and see if we can move forward with some of these suggestions.
Ms. McGannan, it would be my understanding or guess that any of these recommended changes would have to go before City Council for approval. Is that the case?
Yes, sir. If it were to the rules of procedure or guidelines, if it was a change to the Charter, it would be to the General Assembly of the State.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. I assume, I think I know for sure that Dr. Jamison had bricks removed, and you did not.
Not his one.
The other two had bricks removed. Were you aware that the city code provides that the city could order you to repair your sidewalks?
I've seen it many times.
Okay. I was just, the question I wanted to ask, since I have two people here with those sidewalks, is had you been afforded the opportunity to bring those sidewalks up to a city standard of safety at your own expense, would you have opted to do that?
I would have estimated the cost. And then I would have tried to go through it because I just love those old bricks. And I would hope, today even, that there's something could be done to accommodate that. I'd like those old bricks. I would love to see edging along the sidewalk with those original old bricks. That would satisfy me. I know this is an accomplished act, but if there would be some kind of edging with brick, I would be thrilled. Just thrilled. I would love it.
Thank you.
And that would help a lot of us.
Any further discussion by this board?
I think we've been enlightened today by our city attorney and our city manager, and it's been good to have some air cleared. But I also think that as a commission, we need to make sure that we do work for the historic zone and that the residents realize how, that we were kind of blindsided by this sidewalk removal as opposed to repair. And I just feel like we need to make some kind of statement, possibly in the form of a motion, that the sidewalks that have been torn up either be put back as brick or at least accent with brick. I'm not quite sure how to state that, but that's what's on my mind. Maybe we could have some discussion about that.
Is that the form then of your motion?
I guess so.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'd second it.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. We're called upon to make a motion as a commission to have the city restore, that's the motion to have the city restore the bricks?
Restore or at least accent with bricks. That's how I stated it. The sidewalks they've already torn up.
I guess my own question to your motion is the fact that the bricks have been removed, some have been used in the residents' own personal yards, like the Egleys have put it in their front sidewalk. So those bricks are lost now. And I guess my question is, if that's happened with the other homeowners who've been given bricks, there's not going to be enough to put the brick sidewalks back the way they were. And so my question is, should we ask that the city, the next, you know, their next fiscal year, their planning, their budget, that they put those brick sidewalks back with new bricks or some old bricks? Or, they have collected bricks in other sites in the city as per your map. And I don't know what you've done with those bricks. They may have been given to the homeowners as well. But we could either put a collection of the bricks that have been removed and from other sites, it'd be a blended brick, blended colors, blended sizes, I would imagine, or put back new ones. And should we just make the motion that they put back brick sidewalks as soon as they possibly can? I'm just not sure we can restore that sidewalk the way it was because they've been removed.
Well, that's why I said I'm not quite sure how to state this, but I do think that we need to be heard.
Yes.
So maybe we should discuss this a little more, and I should restate it.
Well, we also have to consider there's still four more properties in Historic Zone that Mr. Lyons has to have input from us on how to handle those brick sidewalks and some that need repaired more than others, but...
And certainly in driving by today, the four sides, the one on East Main that remains appears to be, as you drive by, in remarkable shape. And another one on College seems to be in good shape, two others need definite work on them. But I would, you know, welcome seeing a motion that we ask that we, the city, work with us on the remaining four that exist, and a request that that stretch on Fifth be rebuilt with bricks as soon as practical. And whether it's both old or new or combination, or however we do it, and see if we can't get that on their list of priorities.
Yes.
Well, I think the city manager's letter says that they will consult with us, so I think that's...
Yes.
On the poll. Ms. Miller, I think you wanted to...
I just wanted to say I have a lot of old brick. I say the old brick, but what people don't know is that there was, really, a huge pile of brick underneath the house when it was rip out here, some time back. So I have a lot of old brick ready to go.
I'm not quite sure about the Robert's Rules of Orders. Do I need to restate my, or do we need to vote this down and start?
I'm not sure of the exact procedures either, but Ms. Lyons, would you like to speak?
I certainly understand what you're saying, Ms. Anderson, but the construction of the sidewalk, before we move any further along about ripping up the concrete that was put there, I really need to get some input from my city engineer about how that's going to work, you know, whether there was some banding or a complete rip out. There's a little bit of work that needs to go into the design of that. And I understand what you're saying. I think I have committed to you that, you know, the, I guess, the four existing locations, you're going to get an opportunity to review those before anything gets done. I've suspended work as far as any replacements go there. But in terms of the work that was just completed, I don't know what the cost of that would be. I don't know, you know, how, you know, a banding might be accomplished, if it was a total rip out, how much money we would be talking about. Certainly, you know, the city budget right now is pretty lean. So it is, there are some engineering issues that are involved with what you initially started out your motion with. So I would certainly ask that you give staff some time to review these items and report back to you.
Yes. I understand that, and I think my preface was that somehow we need to let our Historic Zone residents know that we are working for them. And so I'm very willing to rephrase that that motion so that we can get on your budget for the improvements that are going to be made and also rethink the brick sidewalks that haven't been torn up yet.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I don't know. I don't know if I'm stating it right.
All professionals in this...
Ms. Thompson, can I ask Ms. McGannan a question?
Yes.
Ms. McGannan, if you wouldn't mind, legally speaking, what is your opinion or the city's reaction from a legal standpoint with regard to a motion that we're going to pass dictating that the city do something?
It is my opinion that the commission could not dictate that the city do something. I think I tried to make that clear in my opinion. I think a motion, if I understand the meaning, I hope I do, that the Historic Zoning Commission accepts the city manager's commitment to consult with the Historic Zoning Commission before there's any future replacement of brick. That the Historic Zoning Commission wishes to express to the city manager its belief that it would benefit the district to use brick either at the locations from which it was removed in some fashion, and ask that he share with the commission what the engineering and cost implications and options might be for such a reuse. I think that would certainly be consistent with the consultative role of the commission.
Yes. Could you repeat that as a motion?
What she said.
Does somebody have that down?
It is being recorded.
Yeah, so we can get that. I think that was the intent of your motion, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Do we have a second then for that motion?
I will second that.
Is there any further discussion regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, I I understand where we are with this, and I think what we have is basically a resolution to support the city manager's commitment. But I'm concerned that there's a greater issue here, and perhaps we need to discuss that after the motion, which is, this episode here has opened up what I think is a hole in the role of the Historic Zoning Commission under the spirit and intent of the state enabling authority and the spirit and intent of the local zoning ordinance. And I think that perhaps a resolution of this nature is appropriate to address that situation, but I think that there are some other things that we should talk about relative to perhaps making some recommendations to the council about some possible changes to the Historic Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you, Paul. Is there any further discussion regarding the motion at hand?
I'd like, I think that the staff finds themselves, Mr. Lyons, in a position of, you know, trying to go back and reason with how it happened and trying to move forward with a new plan. And I can understand, you know, the difficulty of going back and pulling up the sidewalk and putting down the brick. But I think the motion is really that, that's what the, this group, had they, had it been brought before them, four probably would have stated that we would have liked to keep final means under which to keep the sidewalk. You have one, maybe two, property owners here today that indicated a willingness to participate either fully or some degree financially for that. Now that they're finding themselves with perhaps additional costs of doing that, I don't know that they would agree with that or not. But, you know, I know that, I know that truly the city administration really does have spot in their heart and pocketbook to keep things going downtown and keep, there's a lot of money spent just around the square area here, even though it was not in the historic district. And I think it's pretty poor that we find ourselves in a situation, we've exhausted a whole lot of time, people's time, in researching this issue and opinions about it, and quite frankly, if there's any way at all to go back and restore that brick, that's what needs to happen. Now, I don't know how it goes forward to the, you know, Mr. Lyons will have to have his staff evaluate that, and I understand that. And I don't know what his authority is spending-wise, you know, because we don't know what it costs now. I don't know if he has, you know, what that authority would be, but if it has to end up with requests for funds from the city council, then he could certainly come to us and say that, you know, we... to us and say that, you know, we would support the council trying to find that, those funds to do that.
Thank you. We do have a motion before the board here today in a second regarding the preference that we add brick or restore the brick as soon as possible, I believe. Brenda, you might want to help clarify this for me. I think that was a no. I'm going to wing it here then. But we do have a motion before us to work closer with the city and to put the bricks back either in trim or in sections that will work with the city to try to move forward on that issue. If that's a fair reflection on that motion. If you're ready for the question, then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those pose? No. Well, then, thank you. We have that motion. Paul, would you like to make another motion then regarding your...
Well, I'd like to have some discussion, and I just have an idea. I think, I appreciate what Dr. Jameson has provided in terms of recommendations, and I certainly want to look at those. But I'm just looking, for example, at subsection eight of 24 for the zoning ordinance, if you take out the word enforcement, where it says, "Commission should be afforded adequate opportunity to review and provide written comments upon any action proposed by an enforcement agency." If you take the word enforcement out of that, on any action by an agency within a historic district, that changes the whole nature of that paragraph. I think that the federal government doesn't do a lot of things right, but I think with the National Historic Preservation Act and the review process that they have whereby there is an advisory council on historic preservation set up to review actions by federal governments, they don't have the authority to stop the federal government from doing anything that the federal government wants to do with a property that's a national historic landmark or listed on the National Register of Historic Places. But they do have the requirement that any federal agency determine if a project has, is going to have an effect on a historic resource and whether or not that effect could be adverse. And if the determination is that the effect could be adverse, then the advisory council, which would be similar to Historic Zoning Commission, is afforded the opportunity to review that and provide recommendations to the agency of the government that is doing that. We could have a situation here where the city, for example, the sewer department is, and they are replacing sewer lines in a lot of the older Murphell area right now. It could be that in the process of doing that, that they have to cross sidewalks or yards or landscape areas that are pertinent to the historical significance of the historic They would have no requirement to consult with anybody about that because that's not an enforcement action. It's an action by an agency. The city also has the authority to approve a lot of private actions where there are no city dollars involved. And by issuing an approval on something, they could allow a private individual to do something that would have an impact on a property in a historic district. So I think the question, if there's a hole in the ordinance, and this event, sidewalks has opened that up, I think that this commission should review that and perhaps make some recommendations to council relative to ways to avoid this. And at the same time, we would not, what we would be asking for is the opportunity to make sure that we're provided the opportunity to review that action and advise the council or the appropriate agency as to what we feel should be taken into consideration so we don't wind up with an episode like this again.
If I could say, a simple way to handle that would be to change the definition of structure or improvement to include sidewalks would be, if that were possible within, you know, be something the city council could, might do very easily, or to even include any other sort of things that might be in the right way that, aside from sidewalks, I can't think of anything, but in some other venues of structure, a sidewalk is considered to be a structure, but by definition, the city chose to exclude sidewalk from what a structure is. However, in the National Register guidelines, I suspect that a sidewalk is a structure.
Mr. Jameson?
Would I be in order to begin the discussion?
We'll allow this this time. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question. If item six would help speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a suggestion here because I think the information that Dr. Jameson has provided to us and Paul's comments are right in line, but it might be good if the commission takes us into consideration and goes through and makes the suggestions to tighten up our rules and procedures. And then we have a unified document that we present to the council that has to approve it, which would be pretty difficult to do in this environment right at the moment, but if we each give our thoughts to what should be done to close those gaps and then put a document together with all that information.
Okay. Ms. McGannon would like to speak?
I realized I left out a step, and I want to mention it later. Because if there are changes to the zoning ordinance, those would need to go to the planning commission before they went to the city council. If it's land use related, it needs to go there first, and I wanted to make sure that I did mention that.
I think what we're hearing here is our commission would like to perhaps set up a committee to review these proposed changes and then meet back and present these to the city in some fashion and go the next step to try to see that we can't, if we can avert similar problems arising in the future to where the nature of historic zone is maintained in a way in which we feel like it's, we in the city agrees important to the whole community. And so I'm wondering if that's what our commission here is saying, we would like to set up a committee to go over this and report back.
Which in turn, we would make a recommendation to the planning commission. Planning commission would make a recommendation to city council. And then Ms. McGannon, who, and I agree, the changing of a few words is probably not going to solve this issue because there are conflicts, they may potentially cause conflict between zoning ordinances and the historic zoning. I mean, with the city manager's authority under certain ordinances and then our ordinances may conflict, so we want to keep them all in line. And I guess there's some concerns that Ms. McGannon's going to have to address with regard to the city ordinances that control the city manager's responsibility for dangerous conditions and things like that. So I think we know what we're trying to accomplish. I just think, but I do agree, maybe we could study it and look at it closer to determine there may be some other issues that we find in studying this, that we, some other holes that we find that we want to try to plug, and so we can make a full recommendation to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest that everyone on the commission has, you know, the right to give input.
Okay.
And so that input can be brought together at our next meeting, and then if you want to pick a committee to put the final document to the planning commission, then probably the way to go. But it'd be good if all of us have a chance to give input then.
Well, why don't we do that then in the next meeting, then we'll present our own personal discussion, and we can set up a committee meeting from there and then go from there.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just make two points. Obviously, I think you all know that any committee would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and it would not necessarily be televised, but it would need to follow those procedures. So we want to make sure that that's followed. And second, an example being the definition of structure, that's something that is in the whole zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance relates to what are sewer policy manuals and the building codes. And so even though you may not be satisfied with the staff's opinion or the role of staff in certain things, I would suggest it would be most productive to get Mr. Ives or myself involved in drafting before you took a vote on something and before you sent a vote to the planning commission, because if you do it from a common sense point of view without being aware of all these other implications, that would be counterproductive.
We would welcome your help.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion today? Well, thank you all very much for this meeting then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I got one more thing.
I'm sorry, Robert. All right. We're not ready yet.
It's been a long day. Real short and sweet. At the very end of your agenda package, there's a calendar that outlines the meetings for next year. If there's no conflicts or anything with that, we'll just go ahead and use that as next year's calendar. If you have any conflicts, let me know. We'll see if we can work around them.
Great. Thank you. Is there any further business?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some, Luke.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.